Do you want me to go ahead and call them in to order? Um, our first agenda is public comments, but we don't have anybody from the public in attendance. So we will move right along um to event review. Um, so we're gonna consent agenda item. Um, I wanted to add an eight B just to. We don't, we could just do it now, but I just want to ask when we're expected to get uh first pass of the budget. That's all um and anything else? Anybody else? So we will have a non meeting after the adjournment of the meeting to discuss negotiation items. And if you want an explanation of where non meeting is, look it up because I can't explain it well. Okay, um, so agenda number four is previous minutes. We've got nine, six and nine twenty. Um, we want to take them together or are there corrections?
I have minor. Um, nine, six. Weren't Dan Morris and John Marston present because they're not listed. You were here, right?
Which day was that?
The sixth. We had updates from them.
If there was an update, I was probably.
So.
It was the first Tuesday of the month.
Hand them to you.
Yeah.
Yep, um, and then Jess Bickford was introduced. She's bridge program staff. It says P A. Is she P A or T R S?
She's S A U, right?
Okay. Okay. So not bridge. Okay. One, that's just a typo. Um, and then under webinar on superintendent evaluations on page five, there's the New Hampshire SBA meeting that goes under the webinar. Not as a separate item. That's all I have for that.
Okay, that was just nine, six?
That was just nine, six.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion to accept the minutes from September sixth as amended, as amended.
Okay, any other comments or corrections? All right, and all in favor of approving as amended, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, nine, six is approved and nine twenty.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion or corrections on nine twenty? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of September twentieth, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic. Right, so move on to agenda number five, which is our board reports. Uh, we don't have a student senate, um, but we do have Mr. Coughlin.
Good evening. Uh, we recently had a couple sightings from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The first one um was our conditional approval for our wood chip plant here at Pembroke Academy. That's our wood chip boiler that heats here in Three Rivers. Um, we go on five year approvals with that, so every five years they come in. Check it out, fill, we fill out a bunch of forms, we give them all our record keeping, et cetera. Um, so we have our conditional approval for that, just waiting for the actual um stamp of approval to show up in the mail. Uh, we also had the N H D S and the different aspects show up um to Pembroke Academy and Pembroke Hill School recently. They were here for our AHAIR program, which is our Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response, Response Act. That just means, for lack of better words, we have asbestos in those two buildings. Um, they came, they checked out what we have onsite, they checked out what we've removed. They looked at all our records, they looked at all our trainings, um, our abatements, the notifications we have to do. Uh, both schools passed with clear colors. Interesting enough, we haven't seen them at the Pembroke Hill School since two thousand thirteen, and there was never an inspection on file for Pembroke Academy. So we're good to get that one on file and be known to those people in a, in a good, positive way. Um, the other side of the AHAIR program is we believe, and we went over with the agency, that we've removed all known asbestos at the Pembroke Hill School at this point in time. Thanks to your guys' in the school board's support over the last four or five years of, of sticking with the plan. So thank you for the support on that. We cleared with flying colors. I'd also like to thank Wendy and Dan who partake in those meetings. Um, and we can learn a lot from them, so they were good days. Lastly, uh, we have our first walkthrough with L B A on Friday at the Pembroke Hill School. So that's gonna start ramping up here.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Josh? It's great news on the asbestos. Well, it's uh, been hanging out there for a while, so could have done that one school anyway.
Yeah, so that, the, when we heard from him, that's one of those emails you get that when you think you've done it all, you say, but we haven't seen them.
Right.
It truly was to, good to have them come in and get that out of the way in a positive note.
Excellent. All right, where did I leave off? Um, principals are next. Um, Dr. Morse is out. Do you have anything from P A or did he leave anything?
Okay.
And we'll go to Mr. Morrison.
So definitely, it's, it's funny how it takes, I don't know, three or four weeks, and we are, we're in, we're in the middle of it, which is awesome. Um, we started uh uh going back to our Panther Pride assemblies, uh, which we have basically once a month and um where we celebrate students of the month. Um, and so the whole school goes into the gym and each teacher um has, well, each team has a represent, represented teacher that will uh name the students of the month in front of the whole uh student body. And everybody claps and cheers, they give them a high five and they get their picture taken. And then we usually also acknowledge uh all the other activities that are going on in the building. So if somebody's on the soccer team, they stand, so just try to acknowledge uh students. We haven't been able to do that for a while. So we want to train all the kids, of course, of how to go, where to sit and, and what it's like to apply it in that big size of a group. But um it was, it was very successful, so it was really exciting to get that going again. And we also have something that's known as R T I. We've started that. It's called Response to Intervention. And uh we meet uh monthly with uh teams and it gives uh staff an opportunity to talk about kids that they're concerned about, um, and it's not special ed kid. It's just where we are with, you know, what we're seeing. Um, and it gives us a chance to brainstorm, maybe some interventions that might be able to help for some kids. And the reason I bring that up tonight is I feel like there's a long list. Um, we're getting uh more and more uh just very interesting situations that we, I've never had to deal with before. Um, so, you know, we're uh really uh kind of, you know, brainstorming and trying to figure out the best way to support some of these kids that um um may or may not have had a lot of education, frankly, for the last couple of years. So that's been interesting and challenging, but we are going and I, we were just talking quickly. There seems to be like here and there and nothing in the middle. It's kind of a weird scenario going on. Uh, but um staff are really cranking and they're really working with kids and trying to, you know, it's hard because we want to, you want to move as quickly as you can, but you don't want to, you don't want to go so fast that you're leaving. It's so, it's, it's more unique than we've had in the past. Uh, this Friday, we have a workshop. We have uh Harvey Silver coming. He's the author of the Thoughtful Classroom. It's been part of our uh evaluation classes and a lot of professional development. So he's a, he's a, he's a character and he's gonna speak to everybody and then he'll visit our schools. And uh hopefully will give us some insight on what we are uh doing at Three Rivers and not just the district, but at Three Rivers specifically. Um, we also, as you know, the budget process has started. Just to kind of give you an idea of what I do is I, this morning I sat down with Katie and we pulled the spreadsheet up and we started line by line and, you know, just kind of picking apart, seeing what we need, what we don't need. Uh, then we get feedback from staff. Um, I, a number, a few years ago, I, I, I decided I was gonna take care of supplies because they don't need to tell me that they need two pencils. Um, what they do need to tell me is you need a new book series, you need, you know, something like that. So uh they will start getting that stuff to me, um, you know, well, they should be by now. Um, and then we'll start putting it together and uh then we'll be off the, and we'll present to you. So that process has started.
It's all fun and games, the budget happens. And. Any questions for John? I've got a couple and they're not fun. Um, it's just quick comments. Um, the first one, uh, wondering how the subsituation has been.
Uh, interesting enough, we've been, as you know, we've been hit hard. Um, and that has not stopped, although our cases have really dipped. Um, I spoke with April last, I think we're at seven, but we were constantly getting like seven a day. Um, so we've had a couple people that have, uh, that did not come into the building because of COVID. They are now in the building, uh, which has made a difference. Um, so while it's not great, um, we're able to, we are beginning to, you know, if we have two people out, we probably can cover it right now. If we get into that three or four, you know, uh, one day we had over ten out, you know, not happening. Um, so, uh, but we're, we're in better shape than we were last year, I'll tell you that much. Not by a lot. The other two goes away because they're doing everything during the day.
And then my other one was similar. I was, if you give a quick comment about busing, where we're at and how bad that is.
I am very pleased how it's going.
Good.
Um, I, I feel like the morning traffic is really, I don't want to say it's not a problem, but it's definitely not the way it was in the past. Um, so but what we've done at Three Rivers is we kept uh parents coming into what we call the big loop. And we have the buses going in that small loop, believe it or not. They turn around and they, they drop off and they leave in the afternoon. They turn around and four of them back up onto the playground. The other two stay in the loop and they've been on time. Um, and no kids, you know, at first we thought we were gonna have a bunch of kids that didn't have a ride. Not one kid has been left. Um, we were down a bus, uh, as you probably heard, uh, was it last week? That created a little, little bit of angst. Uh, but you know, once we got through it, um, you know, Linda, one thing Linda's pretty good at is once she figures it out, it begins to happen. Uh, but honestly, uh, it's been really pretty good.
Good.
Uh, after school, not so much.
Okay.
Athletic classes, we are just, yeah, perfect example, we have a cross country meet tomorrow. We have two soccer games and we got a call from Notdale from the other provider. And well, yeah, can we come at like two twenty or two fifteen? Because otherwise, you know, we're gonna drop them off here, there, there, and then we're like, well, that's not gonna work. We can't do that. So we're kind of like, yeah, it's, that's been a real, real struggle.
Okay.
We're just not available.
Excellent.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, we'll move up the hill.
Um, so we're gonna hear a lot of the same topics as John just talked about. Um, because we're kind of all in that same rhythm now, you know, it's uh about a month goes in and then the kiddos get back into the routine of things, the academics start to ramp up. So it's, we're all kind of in that same shift right now. Um, today we met um as a team for data meetings. We identify we have three goals when we, we, we have our data meetings. It's based off of all of our benchmarking and initial assessments we do with our students. Um, and the first one is to identify any school-wide resources that we need, we want to provide to students. That would be table interventions. Um, we have a speech and language interventions that we use through our ESR funds and we also have O T intervention as needed. Um, so today is to look at all of that, decide how we were gonna provide those resources or which students we were gonna be able to provide that to. The second one is kind of really just keeping tabs on the kiddos to make sure that they're making appropriate progress and just having conversations as needed. And then the third one is to get school-wide patterns. Anything that as a school we could look at, like we're doing a great job on areas that we need to grow on. Um, it was a really great, um, meeting today was probably the best we had, so I was very excited. And it's just about the team coming together, you know, we're finally getting groove a little bit more, so I really enjoyed that today. Um, from that, we have a couple of school-wide focuses throughout the year. One is looking at our math assessments in particular to make sure they're giving us the data that we want. Um, Friday, we also have Thoughtful Classroom P D. That's in the second half. I mean, our teachers are going through handwriting without tears, which is a handwriting program, K four. It would be K to two is print, grades three and four is cursive. That was a big school-wide focus that we needed to address. Ranging from COVID-related, let's go home, they're on devices all the time. They're not doing a fine, a lot of kids, a lot of kids that you'd expect to come in to go use scissors don't have those types of skills. So we're making sure that we're providing systematic instruction, K four, to kind of remediate that. And the other focus on is what we call word study, which in the younger grades is, you'll hear is phonics. In the older grades, it's, they say spelling in air quotes, but it's more about you're seeing patterns in words. We're excited that Guidance is starting back up in the classrooms. For the past couple of years, she's really had to support with a lot of the social, emotional um things throughout the building and haven't been able to be consistent with that. So she's back in the classrooms um every couple of weeks to work with students. K two, they work a lot on um being part of the community. And in three, four, they work on empathy towards others as they start to up that age range. And then another thing I'm very excited about is our assemblies as well. I have never seen one. So we got to, I know, two years here, we've never seen a full assembly. It was, that one of the best memories I have so far. Um, whole school, ours are a little different. Um, teachers all watched the red carpet and were introduced to all of the students. Played a silly game called that thing. Um, and it's just really about building community. And then we brought in some of the practices from regulated classroom, which is a P A I shared with you guys. Um, whole school is doing at the same time. It's kind of a rhythmic activity to help build regulation and just what we call collective joy. Um, and that idea of collective joy is super important because it reappeats throughout the building into classrooms and everywhere. So it was absolutely amazing. I think that's it for us.
Thank you. It's just weird, do the mics like actually pick up voices now? I feel like it's a lot better. Um, questions for Wendy? I'll ask about subs and buses.
Our subsituation has been pretty good. Um, a day here, there, but it was tough. I put that out to staff ahead of time if I knew it was gonna be tough and I wanna thank them very much because a lot of them who maybe scheduled something different or maybe not took that day did, which helped a lot. Um, also the same thing, the kids are getting there on time before school starts and then they have a hiccup, they get split onto separate buses and they still make it home. They make it home at a little bit of a different times, but at least they'll still be there.
Great, anything else before we move on? Okay, thank you all. Um, next we got S A U slash exec board.
Um, so we met last Wednesday and approved the S A U budget, which will be presented to the full S A U board next Wednesday at six o'clock. And it's here in the CAF, okay? Um, and pretty much that's it.
Okay. Um, yeah, so ten, twelve is a board meeting um for the full board to see the budget and then uh two weeks later, on the twenty-sixth, is another full board meeting, also in the CAF, right? Um, for a public hearing on the S A U budget and then a vote.
Seeing as far as location went.
Yep, ten, twelve and ten, twenty-six, I think they're both Wednesdays. If at all possible, I might be out of town for the first one, but if you are iffy about a forum, let me know. Um, okay, so the last one is Hill renovation. I don't think there's been another meeting since then, but I don't know if you have anything to share?
I don't have anything to share. The next meeting's November first, Tuesday at four o'clock.
All right. Then we'll move on to number six, consent agenda. We do have one item under there tonight.
Yeah, um, thank you for accommodating this request. Just put in a couple of field trips for Three Rivers School. Rather than wait until the next meeting, I was hoping you'd be willing to take a look at those tonight. Um, one is for the Washington D C trip and the other one is um for ecology school. And if you have questions, Sean can answer them, but they're the same trips that they take every year.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, just something coming up every year and you had commented kind of heavily last year about the cost. Um, it seems like it's in line with where it has been.
Yeah, we were concerned that we were going to, we actually looked at a New York trip and it was more expensive, so I don't know why. But uh, so when we uh cut that back, we're like, yeah, we'll go another year, we'll give it a shot. And we're also gonna try to do a few more fundraisers this year um to help uh counter the overall. Right, we, we do, kids have an opportunity to do their individual ones, but I'd like to see honestly a few more to just get the overall cost down. Um, so we're gonna, we're actually planning another uh clothing drive. Um, it doesn't give you a big bucks, but it's, it's enough to maybe soften that up. Uh, the D C trip was just uh taking down twenty-five dollars because we had a few more kids uh decide to go and then so that number brought the total number down, which seems like it shouldn't happen that way, but it does. So it seems to be in line with what we're, what we're doing. So the, the environmental trip is creeping up too. I, I feel bad for folks who've got somebody in sixth grade and eighth grade. That, that's a, that's a tough hit, or you got twins, you know?
Yeah, I would echo, and I know John and I have already talked about this, um, just two of us too, but I would, uh, personally, my, I agree with notion of having more fundraisers that benefit the whole pool of money. Um, you know, especially those families that might not have the means to send their kids. It kind of gives them more of an opportunity. And along those lines, I believe ten, thirteen, I think. Um, I think it's pals fundraiser, but I think it's, I think it's towards the field trips. Um, for wild wings, ten percent a year bill goes towards pals, so go to that. Anything else on these?
Uh, just so you know, we do try to give some scholarships out for kids. We, we, we're not gonna do the whole, you know, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for D C, but we, we do try to give some, um, and that, that can be helpful for some folks.
Okay, um, so I think we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the two field trips as presented?
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving two P R S uh field trips as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic, thank you very much. Give some donations, you there?
Um, but I do want to mention, because Dan's not here, um, we have a parent that has donated a significant amount of supplies um from Walmart and gave first, the first round was um folders and something that stayed here, but then the second round had safety scissors with plastic caps and things that um were shared, they came in through Pembroke Academy, but were shared with the Hill School. So an enormous amount of supplies that was um very gracious. They have a card to thank her, so there's no need to accept it, but just wanted to make you aware that that was very much appreciated.
And I know that um the music teacher at T R S put out a bit of a call because they were short on instruments and I talked to him yesterday at cross country practice and he said that the need had been met. They, they got donations from the community either for a loan or for a straight up donation within a few days. So grateful for the community to help out. Um, all right, then number eight, immediate business. The only thing that we have here is the goal stress slash strategic planning. And I know that we're doing uh that's some work on that next time around with the TV, right? Was that today? I brought my laptop thinking it was today because I honestly couldn't remember.
My laptop two, do we want to look, is it easiest to look at it on the screen?
That's up to everybody. If it's in the drive and we all have devices, we could probably look at it individually or.
It's not, it's in the email.
It's, yeah, it's not in the drive, but I did go back in and share it with everybody's email, so you shouldn't have.
I'll just wait for my mail to sync. Oh, I did get an email about trunk or treat too. Haven't read it closely yet, but it's gonna be a thing. Okay, um, so this was Melanie slash Stacy, right? So if, if one of you wants, kind of tell us what we're looking at here.
Right. So Melanie took a first pass at it. And so if you look at the first tab that says goals and objectives, um, she put it together and looking at SMART goals separates it into each part. And then I, last night, um, put together the second tab. So I wrote each of the goals into a SMART goal. The parts that are in purple are the, I like, I'm not clear on what that should be. And then with that, just an update for each month where we could update each one. But we could add objectives to that however you want. I don't know if you want to look at the SMART goals to see if we have them collectively written the way we want, if this works to start with, or what people are thinking.
And I tried to add like on the first tab, just like some things to think about, like who's doing it? How are we gonna do this? What's the timeframe? Just like that came from just a template. So the idea that Stacy and I have like done before is you kind of go by each goal, fill in some of those blanks and then go into the SMART goal and it tracks your progress. Great, Stacy, is that what you're saying? You kind of just go one by one and then the SMART goals will track each month where we are.
And I, I froze column A and B so that you can just slide over and be able to see where you're at and keep everything there. But we could add objectives or, you know, I certainly would put the to-dos or anything of initials and things like that.
Sorry, I'm just looking, I haven't got a chance to take a good look at it yet. If anybody has anything, jump right in. So one question about the format, just because again, I haven't done these before. Um, so just on the first tab, uh, the first goal is budget, right? Um, so what do we, like objective, there's three objectives there. Is that sort of just a template or do we think there will be three objectives for the budget? And if so, I'm just wondering how that sort of plays out.
It's just a template. Most people usually do two or three, because if you do more than that for each one, it gets very overwhelming and like unattainable.
Okay, gotcha.
It's just a template.
Okay.
Anything we want to.
Yeah, I, I think it looks great.
I tried to write the goals so that they had specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. I tried to write the goals so that they had specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound in the goal. So that we're not looking at each one of those separately, because then it can get really tricky. So that's why the goals, I took what we had originally written. And then added everything to that. So that's why they're a little wordy.
Right. That's what, it's good, and I think, I mean, I agree with the edit in the first box. If that word budget was in there, it doesn't need to be in there again. It's already in the previous sentence.
I'm looking for an adequate education, not an adequate budget.
Right.
Okay, but I was like, I don't want to just change this. I just wanted to point out that that was there. All right, I'll take that out right now.
Okay, so then um, if, if we all agree with this format, then I think the next thing to decide is sort of what? So we've got each month, which is great. I, my thought is that we will probably put more specific work. So budget might be a bad example. Budget we'll talk about during our first of the month meetings every time for a while. Um, but the other ones, you know, if we do culture climate survey or whatever like that, it's probably gonna be something that we focus on more in the second meeting of the month. So can we, should we plan to, and we don't really always do agendas for those meetings, but should we plan to have our sort of last agenda item for our deliver, our, our working meetings? Be to come in here at the end of the meeting and update, throw an update in here for the goals that we worked on that month, so we can kind of keep it going? I'm afraid that if, if we just say, well, we'll do it in between, then it'll get skipped and then it'll get out of date. But there's no reason we can't at least jot some notes in here while we're all in the room.
I think that was the idea too. That's what I was hoping, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, anytime it's, right, if we talk about budget, we can go in that meeting and do it too, but I, I think mostly it'll be the second meetings.
Well, and even every month, there may be an update, even if this wasn't covered in this particular month. We still can update that so that it's not just a random, we didn't, you know, oh, we don't know what we did. Well, it isn't something that we addressed.
Right.
And it still gets recorded.
Yeah, and I think even, you know, and once that maybe we don't touch that goal, there might still be uh, something we hear from the administrators that we want to keep in mind. So we use it as a, a notes type of thing too.
Yes.
Good, I'm glad that this is in place and we have a.
There's a little bit of wording, I think. Um, both goal five and six, and then also. I put together the um, Hill School goal of what some of my thoughts were, but. Definitely wanna look at how we really want to word that.
Do you, I haven't had time to look at it. Did you, when you shared it, do I have the ability to share it as well?
Yes, I think so, because I put everybody as an editor, so I would think so.
Great, so I'm just gonna put it in the drive and then I share it with the principals and with Sandy.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, I think the blog that you did for the Hill School one is great. Um, I think the non-technology dependent one is not completely unrelated to technology. But I think one call now is probably the other one that we could call out specifically. Um, it's phone calls, so even if you don't have a cell phone, you'll still get it.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of that we want to update, and it might become part of our communication plan. But that we want to update taxpayers who don't have kids in school who aren't tech savvy.
Oh, I see, gotcha. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Who will not get there in March and say, I have no idea that this was happening.
Yeah, and I know that the firm, the, the, the last quarter of the meeting that I did catch, um, they, they have some community engagement stuff on their radar too. So that'll be helpful, but you know, we might get to a point with their help where uh, if, you know, if they're gonna do a one pager, a PDF that they're gonna throw on Facebook or something. We could probably print twenty-five copies of that and throw it at the town office too, type of thing.
Same in library or town hall.
Yeah.
Do um, postcards, to do mailings for um, Deerfield, so I think there were four of them on just different topics. They're really good at designing those for us and helping us with those, and then we can do a mailing, because you're right, there are people that aren't, don't have an attachment to the school any other way.
Cool. Right, um, any other discussion on, on the process of this, the layout, anything like that? Before we move on.
The only thing we had Andy is like, we can eventually take care, take out that first tab. Like, that was just a basis of like, for us to be thinking about the goal and where are we going? But Stacy's is like, the format that I was getting to. Do you know what I mean? It was a very basic template. So if it turns out everybody's an editor, that Stacy's makes more sense to track everything, like, just delete that first tab. And Stacy can delete the first tab.
Even if we don't use it, but it's just nice to, I can never, letters and smart, I can usually write three or four of the letters and smart. So I mean, having those there and defined and like, I think this is great. Even if we never put anything in it, it's nice to have it there to sort of.
Okay.
Remind ourselves. And if it makes sense for anybody that edits it, if you want to switch the tabs around, make the other one first, so that's the default, that's the, that's cool too. Great, um, we're, so I think we're all good on, on the format and the update cadence and that sort of thing?
Yeah.
On finishing goal five and six. Communication plan. And culture and climate survey. That should be a fairly easy goal. I just don't think I. Know enough. And the district communication plan, I was like, I'm not touching that. Well.
Yeah, I'm, I think I have a couple of like, verbs that I've started and never actually brought forward, so I could bring one of those next time around. As a, or I can email it out in between as sort of a starting point if you want.
Or do you even want to just put it?
I can drop it in there, yeah.
And then make another color.
Yep, I can do that.
Hey, thanks for the culture climate survey. So we had lost, um, as I told you, Chris Montika had done all that work with Deerfield. So we agreed that later on, or mid-year, I think it was, we were gonna try to put together something as a leadership team. Do you recall what month that was? We were gonna try to?
We like.
I probably haven't in my notes.
Seriously, kind of went like March, because you know, everything. Got winter break in and.
So if we want to add that as like a benchmark. And I might, if I can get a hold of what Chris did for Deerfield, we might be able to steal some of it if it's pertinent.
Yeah, I thought there was, you had mentioned there's something on Google.
Yeah, that's how he did it.
Oh, he took something.
Yeah, but if, he did, he did a ton of research and took questions from all over the place. So if we can steal some of those questions, it just saves us from rewriting. And we can show that, you know, we could give them to you guys and you can look at them and.
Yeah.
See what you think.
Okay, so in terms of the agenda, um. Is it, is there, does anybody have any specific board goals that they wanted to discuss tonight outside of our discussion that we just had about the process and the, the planning? Is there anything that anybody wanted to bring up? Right, I didn't think so, I should check. Okay, um, then if everybody's good, Stacy?
In October, update for Pembroke. Hill School, that a meeting was held.
Yeah, since the next one's not till November, probably a good idea.
Yeah, just to have it, that a meeting was held and that Melanie attended, just so it's there.
Yeah, I attended, doesn't matter.
No, you, we, and I love that you have it in one place, because if you just make notes throughout the year in minutes, you, you never have it in an easy, you know, easily accessible format, so that's, love it.
So I put a placeholder in there that I will fill out more and get notes, I think Patty took notes during it, um, and I'll add a couple of details in there. I don't even remember what day that was, so. Do you, actually, have your calendar out? Do you remember what the date was?
Yeah, I was, I was already looking ahead to the, I wanted to see when the budget was, so I could tell you that. Um, I don't have it. I'd have to look, my calendar's pretty full. I have to look back, um.
Sounds familiar. Yes, thank you.
Memory, yeah, it was, yeah. No, we were talking about the um, Hill Bud, Hill meeting. I've got the budget stuff, yeah. It was September twentieth.
Josh, did you see the first walkthroughs this Friday?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I forwarded them today, yeah. Thank you, and I'm gonna have Ashley post them. She may have already put them in your drive actually, but they are.
Okay, all right, got it in there too.
Oh, for the board goals? Yeah, you could do that. That's scheduled for Friday, Stacy. If you, if you wanted to update, um, Josh is walking through with, it's the engineers, right? For the most part, on Friday, to start looking at our systems.
Yeah, just type that in.
There you go.
So I just, I, and I mean, everybody look at this and tell me, you know, if you want more or less, and you know, I think we'll all, we can all contribute to this document and we can sort of hone. What kind of information we want here and how many details and everything, but for now, I just wrote, meeting happened nine twenty, advanced planning walkthrough plan for ten seven, meeting minutes in board drive.
And we, one more thing if you want, we um, sent them three dates that we would be available to do the visioning sessions, so those are being scheduled too.
What is it? What's the letters? LBA?
LBA, yep, La Valley Brenniger.
Visioning sessions?
Mm-hmm. That's when they come and meet with all the staff.
Cool. Hey, something's filled out.
Built in.
Feel accomplished. All right. That's not the right agenda.
It's budget, you just added budget.
Yeah, all right, AP, so yeah, I don't need much, I'm just wondering if we have an idea when we're gonna get our first.
We do. Um, so we did, we showed the executive board and I think it should be shared with all of you. Um, there's a budget calendar, so we had done this a couple of years ago before COVID, um, and we, it was really helpful. So we sat down with Amber and we basically just back planned everything, like, when is, you know, this presentation and backed everything up so that the principals had their templates. We knew the SAU budget gets done first. Principals had their templates to enter information to Amber by September thirtieth. Um, and then your first, the first time you'll see the budget is on November first. And if you're okay with it, we thought last year actually went really well, that we were able to start a meeting earlier and just present the building information. So the principals were able to just walk you through everything that they were putting in for. Um, and it gave us the budget, you know, and earlier, the first meeting instead of the second meeting. And then your November fifteenth meeting, Amber would be here to present um, the portions of budget she does and probably the facility specifics if it's not done.
Yep, that's actually why I brought it up, because I thought that worked really well last year. It was nice to have, you know, not the entire thing.
Yeah, it's a lot at once. And then you're not focused as much on the bottom line too, when the principals are going through their, their sections. You really hear about what, what's going on in the buildings and what we're looking for.
Yeah, and the other reason I ask is because I, I believe the thirteenth is the first NBC meeting. Um, if you have a really good break, it's usually like we have one in the middle of October and then there's two or three weeks before we have another one. But I think it's the thirteenth is the first one, um, and they'll ask when we're gonna see it, so.
So, and you could, you know, you'll have had the building level budget already in draft form, so they could look at that. You can let them know, it's, we'll ma, we make everything available the minute you have it, so. They would at least be able to look at building stuff if they were interested. Do you know, you probably don't know yet, when they would be looking for us to come and see them the first time?
No, but it's, I believe it's usually the last meeting before the holiday break, or maybe one meeting before that. So I, I mean, well, so looking at the calendar here, let me see when my Thursdays are, I was.
Twenty-second?
I'm gonna guess either the fifteenth or the twenty-second.
I don't know that we could pull off the fifteenth.
Okay, I'll take a note to aim for twenty-two then. Because I mean, so then usually after that, um, you know, they'll probably take, probably take twenty-second, um, sorry, the twen, the twenty-ninth off and that's it. Be back to work on the fifth, and we'll have probably four meetings before, because the public hearing is usually the, that first Thursday of February, is that right, the second?
Yeah, it's second.
Oh, it's a Wednesday.
The second?
Is the first Thursday.
Oh, oh, I'm the second, it's the first.
Oh, you're the second.
Yeah, so those are usually on Tuesday. Is the public hearing on a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Thursday, I think.
Is it a Thursday? It goes on there.
That's the night of their NBC meeting, so.
Okay, so yeah, so it's probably, so probably February two then, I'm guessing.
When you put that.
Yeah, I'll just say, so all I'm trying to figure out right now aloud is, we'll probably have four meetings after the break. And those are usually generally dedicated mostly to us, with the exception of the last one before the public hearing, because that's when they take their final votes on everything, so. Yeah, I, I think the twenty-second is reasonable, knowing that we'll have the fifth, the twelfth and the nineteenth after the break, so.
It's been, that's what historical has been, that we come right before the Christmas break. You do your presentation, give them the binders, and then they kind of mull it over and we dig in on the first meeting of the year.
Okay, cool. Great.
And as you, as soon as we get the schedule, we'll go back into that budget calendar and update all the dates, so everyone has them.
Okay, that's all I was wondering. Anybody else have initial questions around budget timing or anything? Okay, um, then agenda item number nine is a big long list of policies, but most of them first readings. Um, so do you have anything, any particular comments on any of those?
So I had given you a heads up last time that during this legislative session, there were a lot of updates. Um, so we usually get a long list, but this time, all of those policies are required by law, so we wanted to get them on the agenda right away. Um, I think my, what I would put out there, if um, Jean and Melanie are interested, is that we could actually agree to go through and update those samples. Um, policies we don't have, that would be for you guys. So that you're not having to do that at the same time as you're trying to review all of those. Yeah, so sometimes it says, you know, we do this per policy blah blah, and we don't have that policy. So she'll just get rid of that, so you don't have to worry about that piece. And then um, we can, there's some blanks that you probably wouldn't be able to fill in, that we can do that reference, you know, the designee of, you know, who does this and who does that. So if that's okay with you, we'll update those for you and then um, then you guys will do your thing and give your recommendations.
Uh, so my, the one thing I had to say first is, we just did the EDH. Like, in the spring, right?
Possibly, but the new, the new policy was, as a result of the legislation that passed requiring thirty minutes, you already have it. So really, it's just looking at the sample policy compared to yours. Um, the sample policy has some things that are optional that you, you'll decide if you want to recommend that this board adopt. Um, it references that, you know, some boards are putting in their policy that they live stream their meetings. So you'll decide whether you're gonna put that in policy or just leave it as something that you'll decide. So there, there are several updates to it.
Yeah, so I, I was, I gu, I guess. The, the legal part of it with thirty minutes, I thought we had taken care of that previously.
I think you did it just as interest of this board.
Yeah.
So you do meet that legal requirement already, yep. You decided to do thirty minutes, you do that normally, fifteen at the beginning and fifteen at the end.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my question too. There's a couple that were revised twenty-twenty-one, but I couldn't really see a difference between the School Board Association recommended and ours. And so I was like, why is this up again?
You know, you can, um, if you go to the end of the School Board Association, there's usually a note about why they updated it.
Okay.
So that's a good place to look, and sometimes it might just be the legal reference that changed, because a new law passed and it's no longer R S A one ninety, R S A one ninety, whatever. Okay, so this changes might be subtle, but usually do put a note to let you know why they revised it, okay?
Um, the other, when we talked about this at the SAU exec meeting concerning data security and records retention. So maybe uh, uh, a response from Josh on that?
Yeah, he has those sample policies that were just changed and he's gonna take a look at those. He hasn't done that yet, but that's on his list, so I wouldn't want to approve those until we know. Taken a look.
And then the school safety and air water. Recommendations from this Josh.
Yeah.
To, if, if you could look at them, that's all right?
You may be familiar with Ashley, she could get those to you. She's my assistant.
Cut the fancy knife.
I think our air and water quality. I think that was I I read it was kind of funny, uh, reading the air and water quality one and sitting there going like, yeah, I'm remembering a school when we went, you know, and. It it's pretty simple what we have right now. And that was 2013. So yeah, that probably. Should be updated. Um, and there was one. We didn't have.
Yeah, it's the J. JJJ. We realized once we looked at that one that we didn't have that one.
So that'll be important to get figured out. Is there any, I guess, in reference to JJJ, the equal access to school programs, is there, do we have anything right now be like that might be similar?
The probably in the homeschool.
Okay.
Policy, it would reference what students have access to. And I don't know if. Private school students are referenced in that policy. I would tend to doubt it. That's probably the bigger issue. We have so many students now either, you know, homeschool, private school, charter school. There's a policy to make sure that they have access to our programs.
Okay, any other questions or discussions on the first reading ones?
Well, I just on JJJ, just one more. Because that doesn't, it didn't seem to coincide because I know we have a policy concerning co-curriculars for students from private or homeschool. Does that run into this, do you think? I didn't think it did. This was pretty much curricular.
It applies to everything, curricular and non-grup.
Oh.
And co.
All right.
Okay, so social media policy, which has been on there for 50 readings, I think.
Think last time we talked about the fact that we didn't really make any changes to it. It was just more that you were going to implement, implement it and use it as a guide. For your plan. So we can take it off unless you wanted to make amendments.
That's I don't have any amendments. I don't know if anybody else does, but you know.
A little bit about it and I don't, I don't think there's anything there that needs to be changed. I would just say we can keep it in mind as we work towards our communication plan and actually start. These accounts. But for now, if you guys are okay, I'm okay with removing it with future agendas. Good. Any other comments, questions concerned around policy?
And we will move on to agenda item number 10, which is our second public comment section. And we still don't have any members of the public. So we'll move on to number 11, which is informational. Okay. Sure.
So if I have thoughts on the. Do I bring them up in discussion or do I bring them to Jean and Melanie for thoughts?
I guess it depends when you think of it. I mean, if it's a week and a half before a meeting, I would send your thoughts to them. But if you're looking at it while we're here and have thoughts, we can certainly discuss and.
I'm just looking at ones that are first reading.
So yeah, I mean, certainly if you think it's something that. If you wanted to discuss, we can discuss. Otherwise, it's something you can send it to them. You can send it to Ashley. You know, certain things will be sent to legal counsel if we if we formally suggest editing the policies for review. But yeah, kind of whatever you want. I'm flexible, Stacy.
All right, we do have one. I guess. The. BHAB. Talking about. ISO approves vendors. Do we look at accessibility and considerations of? Software being accessible?
That is required. Yeah, and not only the data, data privacy act, but ADA compliance and including posting anything on our websites, we're required to do that. Yeah.
But yeah, if you if you're reading through and you've got a suggestion or. I I, you know, send it because you may pick up on something that. I don't, and I'm known for that.
I have some wording stuff on a couple of those policies, but. They may not be wording things that I can actually change and maybe words that I don't like that are just like in there that I can't control. Do you know what I mean? There are some terms in there that I'm like. But they fall under like RSAs and stuff and they're.
Right.
A little bit. That you'll probably pick up on too, Stacy, if you look at them.
I guess process wise, Patty, if. Stacy or if the committee or any individual member has things that they want to bring to to your office. Do you want them to send them to me first? Do you guys have a point of contact? Or is it okay to send you you and Ashley directly?
Yeah, no, you can send them to to me and Ashley. Sometimes people redline the document.
Sometimes people, you could just scan that and email with your handwritten notes and what we typically do is upload it in the drive and I title it Stacy's efforts. And then the board knows, okay, this is something Stacy sent for your consideration.
The thing I was gonna know, I don't know if it'll be helpful or not, but you had mentioned one that was like super close and you couldn't tell if there's differences. If you're working on a computer and that and, you know, mobile device.
Yeah.
There's a free app called Notepad plus plus, which is used for coding and stuff, but it's also just a text editor and.
So you could have two windows open at the same time and you could paste the two things in there and then tell it to come and it'll like highlight what's different between the documents. So if you ever get one, it's like really hard to.
Yeah, exactly.
It's called Notepad plus plus. The pluses are plus signs, not notepad.
Notepad plus plus.
Yeah. No, it's not that. It's it's no, it's a it's an application for a computer, not for, I don't, I don't know if there's an iPad version, but on a Mac or a PC.
I'm gonna try it because.
Yeah.
For late now, I print the one recommended from the School Board Association and what we have and try to figure out what looks different is what I do.
Show you every single thing that is different. So if none of them has a note at the top of the other, but yeah, you can, you can arrange two windows within it. And then there's, I can't remember where the menu is, but if you want, next time I can do a. Yeah, I can demo it for you. It's on my computer. I can do it after this if you want. But yeah, it's handy. Cool. All right. So we're on 11 informational items. I don't know if we had anything. Okay. Then we do have need to go into non-public session. We have Chara say 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letter C. Which is matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than other than a member of the board on a roll call vote at 7:30. Jean?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
And I'm yes.